Colleagues, please be seated. Members of the public, thank you. Is everybody sitting in the right seats? Good evening colleagues, welcome to this meeting of the Borough Council and I must remind you this has been recorded and live streamed. Welcome to those members of the public who are in the public gallery and those watching from home. If any member of the press or the public would like to record the proceedings themselves, please do so from the public gallery without interfering with the business of today's meeting. There's no fire alarm planned, so if the fire alarm sounds, can those sitting in the public gallery exit through the doors behind you? And those sitting in the council chamber leave by the doors behind me. Make your way to the front of the town hall where we have a head count. Please ensure your mobile phones are switched off or are on silent during the meeting. And any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphone available. And a reminder that full council today will only deal with the business that's on the summons. I have received apologies from councillor Aldi Huntley, councillor Margaret Melling, councillor Melbourne, councillor Millen. Are there any other apologies? Councillor Portos?
Councillor Foreman, thank you Mr Mayor.
You. Councillor Dean? Councillor Patey, thank you. Yes?
Sorry, also councillor Milne.
I've already got her, I've just said her. First item of business is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make a declaration of interest before we move on to the next item of business? And could I remind colleagues, if you have a disclosable pecuniary interest in an item, that will prevent you from participating in the debate and any vote and you will have to leave the chamber during that item. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Taylor. I'd just like to declare an interest because I'm on the Committee for Corporate Parenting, thank you.
Councillor Prolog?
I've also declared the same interest, I'm on corporate parenting as well, Mr May.
Councillor here.
Thanks, I declare the same interest, Mr May, I sit on corporate parenting, thank you.
I notice everybody's sitting tonight when they're addressing the mayor, it's just point of interest. The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of council held on the 7th of September 2023. Are they accepted as a true record? Councillor Barclay? Right.
Mr Murches, for accuracy, I'm Chair of Corporate Parenting Committee as well.
I'm going to say it again, if you're going to address the mayor, could you please show some etiquette and please stand up? Thank you. The next item of business is mayors announcements and communications, certainly, I'm just going to say in a minute. Thanks, John. The next item of business is mayors announcements and communications. Colleagues, it's with profound pride I can announce that the Ministry of Defence Employer Recognition Scheme has revalidated its South Tyneside Council as a gold award holder. The council will now hold this for a further five years and I'd like to thank all of those involved in this terrific achievement, thank you. The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. No questions have been received under this rule. Item five, the next item of business is to deal with petitions received under council procedure rule nine. None have been received, but in accordance with council procedure rule 9.14, the Director of Regeneration and Environment has provided an update on the auction taken in respect of a petition received by council at its meeting on the 29th of June 2023. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the update report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mr May. Colleagues, this report provides an update on the action that has been taken in respect of the petition that was presented to full council at our meeting on June the 29th, 2023. This satisfies the requirement of council procedure rule 9.14. Mr May, I move the report and ask colleagues to note the content of the report for information.
Thank you.
Item six, in accordance with council procedure rule 10, to consider the following notice of motion. There are two motions to be considered under this rule today. The procedure for motions is as follows: I will ask the proposer of the motion to move the motion and he or she may speak for up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconder may speak for up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members whom may each speak for up to three minutes and each move amendments if so desired. Any amendment must be relevant to the motion. Only one amendment will be moved and discussed at any one time. If the motion is not carried, other amendments to the original motion may be moved. If an amendment is carried, the motion is amended, takes the place of the original motion and becomes the substantive motion to which any further amendments are moved. Motion one has been submitted by councillors Thompson, Robertson, Brennan, Forster, Kennedy, Milburn and Roberts. Councillor Thompson, please present your motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This motion today is to establish opposition representation to the Corporate Parenting Committee. Some will wonder why it doesn't have opposition representation already. This includes me and I think most of the opposition. Simply what has brought this to light are the recent Ofsted findings and the resulting inadequate rating given to South Tyneside Council's children's services. Questions have been asked to the lead member for children's services about why, despite LGA recommendations for opposition representation, here in South Tyneside, we only have labour group representation. The response from the lead member was vague and simply not acceptable. Something about a verbal offer to one councillor from one opposition party several years ago. That's not how this should work, keeping in mind our proud values and how professional sits at the top of that list. Formalising this committee to ensure we have cross-party representation and that we establish a level of professionalism is essential. It's essential how we move forward from this low point with children's services. We need to do the best we can to prevent any other situations with oversight, challenge, policy and strategy being significant issues to the service in the future. This is best achieved by ensuring we have the best representation on the corporate parenting committee that's available to us as a council. And also it must be selected from all elected members to achieve that, not just from the labour group. Additionally, we need, because as stated by Ofsted, in their recent findings, I'll quote directly from Ofsted, "The impact of leaders on social work practice with childrens and families is inadequate." As stated in this motion, currently, most other local authorities follow the LGA guidance and have cross-party representation. Newcastle, Surrey, Brent, Southwark, Thurrock, Cheshire, Peterborough, Stockport, Hampshire, Worcestershire, Nottingham, Durham, the list goes on, it's pretty much nearly every other local authority that has cross-party representation. Simply put, having cross-party representation on the South Tyneside Council's corporate parenting committee may bring a wider range and level of both abilities and interest that would be a benefit to the committee. Significantly, in this motion, we have additionally, we have added also a proposal that because of the seriousness of the situation in relation to the Ofsted rating for South Tyneside Council's children's services, it is necessary for the lack of opposition representation on the corporate parenting committee to be addressed and considered by constitution committee at their next meeting on the 25th of October this year. I hope everybody here today can support this motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Thompson. Is the motion seconded? Okay, councillor Robertson, you can speak now for up to three minutes or you can reserve the right to speak later in the debate.
I'll reserve the right, please, thank you very much.
The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Ellison?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I want to start by saying that our corporate parenting responsibility is that of every member and every officer of this council, regardless of whether they sit on corporate parenting committee. We all have a duty to act on behalf of and give consideration to our young people. However, the opposition are asking for a change of the makeup of the committee in year when there were no vacancies, having not made the request to the annual meeting of council or cabinet when places were allocated. As part of our improvement journey and alongside our external advisers, we are looking at corporate parenting committee in the round, a full review carried out by an external body which will not only take into account what we do as a committee or as a corporate body, but will also make recommendations on governance. The motion which we have before us today mandates that the constitution committee consider and make changes to how the committee operates at their next meeting on the 25th of October, without having given our external partners a chance to review or make recommendations. It's my recommendation that we wait for the external feedback before jumping. We want to get this right for our children and young people. I'm confident that we'll have formal feedback in the new year, ahead of any meeting of annual council. Therefore, there will be a much more appropriate time for the constitution committee to consider such an important matter at a time when the fuller recommendations and thinking can be taken into account. I'd encourage colleagues in the chamber to wait for this and vote down the motion that prejudges any feedback that may be received. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Any other members? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to come in here because it was mentioned that an informal verbal offer was made in the previous year and that related to me. An invite came to me verbally on the evening of annual meeting in 2021. It wasn't done as part of the normal appointments, the tabled items were, so there was no opportunity to put forward a counter proposal as councillor Ellison's just suggested because it wasn't one of the appointments that was being made on that night. It wasn't possible to do that because the offer was made on the night of the meeting verbally and I was then asked to go away and think about whether I was in a position to take it up, which I wasn't because of work commitments. And if I was going to take up something like that, I'd want to do it if I could do it properly and do the role of justice. But there was other members of my group at that time who have relevant skills and experience and who could have contributed to that. And the offer was not made to them, it was not made to other members of the opposition at that time either. And so the appointments for this particular committee are not done in the same way as they are for the other committee places where we are approached as a group and given our allocation and we can decide who amongst us has the skills, experience, capacity, you know, in terms of other workload to take on that responsibility and do it to the best possible, you know, get the best possible outcomes for the borough. And that wasn't done in this case and I would argue it should be done in this case. Nearly a third of the councillors on South Tyneside Council are opposition councillors at this point in time. It seems only right, I mean, we heard at the start of the meeting, the people that declared an interest because of this agenda item or from the, or from the labour benches. And yes, we are all corporate parents, but because of that, I don't understand why, why you wouldn't want to have the scrutiny and robustness of opposition voices around the table and able to contribute to that and make a meaningful impact on behalf of our residents. I'd, I'd take the point about getting external feedback, but we've had external feedback from Ofsted on how our children's services are going in this council. And I think this would be an appropriate response at this time to show in line with the proud values, we're working in a different way now than we maybe in line with the proud values, we're working in a different way now than we maybe have during the past in this council, we're working in a collegiate way to work together to get the best possible outcomes for the people of this borough, and that includes certainly the children of this borough, for whom we're all responsible for as corporate parents. So I would urge people to vote for the motion tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's fairly obvious that something needs to change regarding the corporate parenting committee. A healthy democracy has alternative views and different voices. Having the same party with all the same views, and no one questioning the lead member on this committee, has led this council to its worst ever Children's Services Ofsted report. Whilst it may be true, hypothetically speaking, that these other voices might have been ignored, they would have still been there to ask the different questions. A same-party member or party colleague probably wouldn't. History has shown us, if you're in charge and you surround yourself with similar views and yes-men, then as leader, you're not going to understand the whole picture. When things go wrong, you're going to think everything is okay when it isn't. Is this what's happened with the corporate parenting committee? I think it's been a contributing factor. It's obvious how we change this and make things better. Open up this panel, committee, to cross-party members and have a balanced oversight. This would bring with it alternative views. You might not like the other voices in the room, but if they're not all heard, how as leader can you be sure the people around you are not telling you what you want to hear? Ignorance and arrogance leads to failure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As has just been stated there, we're all supposedly corporate parents, but this is not about Labour and the opposition, this is about us as a council acting together for the benefit of our children. Every single councillor in South Tyneside is deemed a corporate parent. Yet when it comes to the most significant committee relating to corporate parenting, non-Labour councillors don't have representation. Most other local authorities realise the important aspect of representation in the corporate parenting committee. It isn't what party you're from, but what you can bring to the committee for the benefit of our children and care. We need to wake up to this now and correct the situation as a matter of urgency. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ofsted have highlighted in their report several serious failures in scrutiny oversight. How on earth can the most important committee relating to scrutiny oversight only be represented by Labour? This needs to be put right as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other member wish to speak on this item? Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to this motion, and having listened to Councillor Ellison, what's needed here is strong leadership. For me, waiting for an outside body to report back is nothing but a convenient excuse not to vote for this motion tonight. There's always been pointed out, nearly a third of members are opposition members. It's common sense, and in the interest of transparency, I believe every member in this chamber tonight should vote for this motion. That is what the children of South Tyneside deserve, and I believe many parents want. This is not a political issue, it's way beyond that. Need strong leadership, and just accept changes need to be made, and with the opposition help, we will help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just listening to colleagues this evening, I think we all value the work of peer reviews. We had one just a short while ago, where we've taken on board the feedback from the peer reviews. The peer reviews are done from professional outside bodies, as well as elected members from other local authorities, Mr. Mayor. And I think this, which Councillor Ellison's proposed this evening, gives us the opportunity to listen from somebody from the outside with regard to corporate parenting, Mr. Mayor. And I second what Councillor Ellison's had to say, Mr. Mayor.
Any other member wish to speak on this? Last speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This document that I have here is the council's own document, and it's a scrutiny structure within South Tyneside Council, and it clearly lists the Court Repairing Committee on there. And the lead member there, when he spoke, and he said, alter a committee mid-year. Again, this is the council constitution, and it says appointing committees and subcommittees. Council can at any time dissolve a committee or alter its membership. I shouldn't have to tell a lead member what the constitution says. Tracy Dixon can change this any day, any day of the year, doesn't matter about mid-year. Adam?
Yep.
So down the lines of, I've just showed you, the scrutiny procedure is listed with the Court Repairing Committee. And in the constitution, page 204, it says, "Each scrutiny committee and panel will be subject to the political balance rules in the Local Government and Housing Act. Scrutiny committees will meet in public and subject the provisions to the Local Government Act 1972." Right? So why is that not happening with the corporate parenting committee? Why? Why is it not open to the public? Why is it not open to the councillors? It says in my own constitution, but we're not complying with it. What is trying to hide, what I is hiding? Why can we not attend even to the councillors, us corporate parents? Ofsted Report, paragraph 47. "The corporate parenting committee aims to provide a strategic oversight of operational performance. The corporate parenting strategy has identified issues of concern to focus on, such as sufficiency. However, until the time of this inspection, the committee has not been adequately cited on the risks and vulnerabilities of children placed in staff's houses." The lead member is the chair of the corporate parenting committee. The committee's failing, and without opposition voices on there, it'll continue to fail. Corporate parenting committee, during this inspection, and these changes that are supposed to be happening, the corporate parenting committee had a meeting on the 4th of July. There's the minutes for it, sorry, not the minutes, you don't publish the minutes, they're a secret. There's two members attended, that's on the council's website. There's six members on the committee, only two bothered to turn up. Next one, you've got your schools workforce consultative forum. In brackets, this is an internal meeting and not open to the public. Again, there's no opposition members on there. There's 11 members on that committee. The last meeting on the 13th of June, there's only three members turned up. Eight never bothered to turn up, Labour councillors. And the old chestnut about opposition councillors not making meetings, the Labour councillors want to look in the mirror. School forum. By the looks of it, there's only four Labour councillors on there. 21st of June, they had a meeting, school forum, lead member, right? Four councillors on the committee, not one of them turned up, you being one of them, right? There's apologies in from Councillor Ellison, Councillor Bell, Councillor Carter, and Councillor Malcolm. Not one Labour councillor could be bothered to turn up. The school forum had to meet without any councillors. It's an absolute disgrace. Thank you.
Councillor Thompson, you can close this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to respond to some things mentioned from councillor Ellison. I mean, I'm fascinated by, I mean, what committees do you have to submit interest in to be asked to be involved? We're talking about one of the most significant committees that we have in this council. I'm astonished by that. And in response to the potential negative impact that was mentioned from additional members to outside bodies. So I'm assuming we've also reached out to the People's Select Committee and the Safeguarding Partnership Committee to look for the same responses, if they feel there's any negative impact since the rollout of the South Tyneside Children's Services Multi-Agency Improvement Board. So has the same thing happened there? Overall, I just get the feeling this is the Labour Group taking umbrage to being asked to do something from the opposition despite the fact that it's common sense and the right decision to do what we've proposed in this motion today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Thompson. Is the motion agreed? I need to say, I've heard some dissents there. Is that motion agreed? Going to put, come on, five, if you can, please, Councillor Robertson. Could you just, you know, come back to the standing up bit? Thank you. Okay. Name vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If members could indicate whether they are for or against the motion when I call the names out, or alternatively, if they wish to abstain. Councillor Bell?
Against.
Councillor Barclay?
Against.
Councillor Best?
Against.
Councillor Brennan?
For.
Councillor Bristol?
For.
Councillor Carter?
Against.
Councillor Cunningham? Councillor Dawes? Councillor Dean? P. Dean, sorry. Councillor S. Dean?
Against.
Councillor Dixon? Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Ellison? Councillor Ford?
For.
Councillor Foster? Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Gibson? Councillor Guy?
For.
Councillor Hay? Councillor Herbert? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy?
For.
Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Leisk?
Against.
Councillor Malcolm? Councillor K. Maxwell?
Against.
And Councillor N. Maxwell? Councillor McHugh? Councillor McKeown?
For.
Councillor Porthouse? Councillor Potts? Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis?
Against.
Councillor Roberts? Councillor Robertson? Councillor Stonehouse? Councillor Strike? Councillor Taylor? Councillor Thompson?
For.
Councillor Traynor? Councillor A. Walsh? Councillor M. Walsh? Councillor Welsh? And Councillor Yeh? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the result of that is there are 30, 3-0 against, and 14, 4. So the motion is not agreed, thank you. We now go to motion two, which has been submitted by councillors Robertson, Roberts, Kennedy, Milburn, Thompson, Brennan, and Foster. Councillor Robertson, please present your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You may speak up to five minutes.
Thank you. So this Ofsted report is an absolute scandal, disgrace. We haven't got a clue really what went on because it's been kept cloak and dagger from opposition councillors, from the public. What's been disclosed is only what Ofsted said, which I'll quote in a minute, which is absolutely terrible. These babies and children didn't have a voice, they still haven't got a voice. God knows when, if ever, they'll have a voice, but who's to say? Years down the road, a decade down the road, 20 years down the road, the South Tyneside scandal won't hit, and I hope to God this video or this meeting is used. And I've just seen youth characters voting against a corporate parenting committee having opposition councillors on. He has a hidden stomach, he has no stomach, and God only knows what it is. Hang your heads in shame. I'll quote some of the sections of the Ofsted report. Paragraph 37. "There has been a significant overall decline in the effectiveness of social work practice within children and families department in South Tyneside. Service leaders have been ineffective in both identifying and addressing the causes of the decline. Senior leaders have not responded swiftly or assertively enough to challenge such as the increase in demand for services. The decision to develop unregistered children's homes to care for children poses a significant safeguarding concern. Over the last six months, a significant number of young children have been living in these unregistered children's homes for many weeks or sometimes months, where their needs are not being met. Other children are also living in unapproved connected care with unconnected carers. They are not monitored and reviewed. The care of these children effectively on order ensure that children's welfare is being safeguarded and promoted." Again, the Ofsted mentioned the corporate parenting committee, which the lead members are chair of. And lo and behold, after this Ofsted inspection stroke report, the director for Children's Services left the council with a £50,000 reward in payoff. It's recorded in the council's accounts, compensation for loss of office. The person should have been sacked, and they should never have been kept a career in social work or children, down to this report. But we've let them go with £50,000 and no staying on their reputation? Absolute disgrace. So the council's portfolio, Air Constitution, page 195, paragraph 9.3.1, states what the lead member's responsibility is. "Direct accountability for the effectiveness and availability and value for money of the local authorities' children's services." This Ofsted report confirms that the lead member is not fit for purpose. Putting a plaster plaster over a hemorrhage is no good, and we're going to see the result in the future again. Paragraph, page 192 of the constitution. "Cabinet members shall as necessary give presentations and explanations at meetings of full council and participate in debates." We shouldn't even have to have this motion. He's paid as a cabinet member. He should have come forward to do the speech at full council. The chief executive should have done a speech for full council. It's all in the constitution, but no. The members, opposition members in the public of South Tyneside are trelit mushrooms and kept in the dark. Ofsted report, inspection of Huddington Comprehensive School at the exact same time that Ofsted was here, 8th and 9th of March 23. Chair of governors at that school is our lead member. This Ofsted report, the school requires improvement. Get the message. The man is not qualified, experienced, or mature enough to be the lead member for Children's Services, for God's sake. Page 189 of the constitution. "The leader may appoint or dismiss a cabinet member at any time, subject to the provisions of these rules." I'm pleading with Tracy Dixon, please replace Adam Ellison. He'd make a good career politician, but you have dropped him in with a poisoned chalice that needs sorting out, and the lad shouldn't be left for it.
Councillor Robertson, could you conclude your final?
Yes, I will do, thank you. I'm on the children and adult safeguarding panel, I was at the last meeting, and this report was submitted to the meeting. Ofsted Social Care Inspection Update. Two comments, Mr. Mayor, and I'll sit down. Within this document, it says improvement and planned action. In reduction of the weekly Child Management Review Panel, which focuses on the five most at-risk children identified in each service. Why the hell's it got a number on? Any child that's at risk, we should be doing something about. The five most at risk? Disgrace. Last comment, Mr. Mayor, is on the same document. The effectiveness and performance management and quality. This is the planned action. We are in the process of developing a quality assurance framework. You should have had a quality assurance framework for decades. Disgrace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Roberts, you are second in this motion. You can speak for up to three minutes, you can speak now, or you can reserve the right to speak, okay, to speak later in the debate. The motion's now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to question, speak, or move an amendment? I've got three, four hands up here, so we'll take Councillor Kennedy first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will never completely move forward from this inadequate rating from Ofsted until the lead member for Children's Services stands up and reports to full council. Not just on how he's working on Ofsted's recommendations, but stands up and follows our proud council values by being open and honest, and with what is wrong in Children's Services, specifically who is responsible. We all need to know, as of today, we still don't. This needs to change. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You, Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not expecting this motion to pass tonight, I've got to say.
I'm not expecting this motion to pass tonight, I've got to say. And and I'm sad about that. The previous, the previous agenda right then just reiterated to me what what's happened time and time again in this chamber since I've been elected four and a bit years ago. And sometimes it feels like it doesn't matter what's said in the debate. It doesn't matter how robust the arguments are. It doesn't matter how weak some of the counter arguments are. Tribalism rules at the end of the day. And the party wins, but at what cost? And that's, that saddens me and I wish it wasn't like that. I don't think it should be like that. And I'm not going to make myself really unpopular now. I agree with the intent of some of the previous speakers, but I must say I'm not comfortable with some of the language that's being used. And not wanting to pick on individuals, but talking about yes men when actually there's yes women as well. And I'm not. I'm not comfortable with talking about someone's level of maturity when that person is maybe one of the younger members of the council. Because I don't think we should be sending signals that that we don't want young people on the council. We need, in my opinion, more younger people and a more diverse council. So. No, no, I get that. My mic's off. It has been to scrutiny and that was done at the request of the lead member. But those scrutiny committees are not necessarily accessible to the public or even other councillors. Of course, if they were recorded or live streamed or put on YouTube, people could have seen those reports on what has been done and the work that's gone on since the Ofsted report. But of course, we already know that that's, that's not a thing that happens. The Ofsted report was alarming and, you know, the situation this council was in is deeply regrettable. And we've, we've heard some of us assurances about what has been done since. And I know some of that positive work has been recognised by Ofsted since. But I don't understand why you wouldn't take the opportunity to report to full council, which is accessible to the public and is recorded and that's on, you know, recorded for posterity. It can be accessed at other times. Why you wouldn't want to highlight the positive work that's been done? Why you wouldn't want to bring that to a forum where it can be debated? And you can hear about the positive work. You can hear maybe a level of scrutiny and examination of what's been done and questions being asked in order to get the best possible outcomes for residents. So although it has been to scrutiny, personally, I can see a benefit to bringing it to full council. And I would urge people to vote in favour of the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to start off by saying actually that I take exception to some of the things that have been said this evening. There's been an incredible amount of work from an officer perspective and an elected member perspective in addressing some of the issues that were raised by Ofsted. And and I hope that in time, members will start to see some of the benefits of that come through the assurance processes. But I do take a specific exception to some of the things that have been said by councillor Robertson. I would like to move a verbal amendment in fact, so Mr Mayor. That I move that all references to the thirtieth of November twenty twenty three be replaced with the date Thursday, the eighteenth of January twenty twenty four. And I'd like to explain my reasoning for this and hope that will gain consensus in the chamber. We're awaiting the first monitoring visit in November twenty twenty three, and as yet we do not have a date for the visit. And it will come with ten days' notice. It's important that the council has a full and rounded up date, as it's unlikely that we can include feedback from the visit and any report for members to consider in a November meeting due to the deadlines for papers to be published. I want to make sure that all members have accurate and up to date information. We're also waiting for feedback from the DFE advisor and other partners. By agreeing to a report in January, we can provide an overview of where we were when the report was published, what we've done since, what external partners are saying about the actions that have already been taken. I hope that colleagues would agree that to this change, which keeps the spirit of the motion, but the intention of data as cabinet member still remains. Mr Mayor, I move the amendment, but I do, like I do say, I would like to put on record that I do take exception to some of the comments that have been passed this evening. Thank you.
Is the amendment seconded? Point of order, what's your point of order? That's the half. That's the half. Excuse me, councillor Thompson, councillor Thompson. First of all, if you're addressing the mayor, okay, please stand up. Second thing is, you've just made a comment saying, you know, nobody spoke on it. There's two people spoke on it. Councillor Ellison put his hand up. I don't know what he's going to say. He's now moving an amendment. Under the constitution, that's where we go. If you want to, you know, get a constitution book and learn it and read it and educate yourself, you'll find I'm following procedure. Okay? Thank you.
Point of information, Mr Mayor.
Yes, and thank you very much, councillor Kennedy.
Just, just on what's just been said there. When I went to put my hand up prior to that, you did see it. I've got three hands up. I put my hand up and you says we now have four. You've just said that there's only two people spoke. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thompson was the fourth speaker I was going to bring in. It's not a point of order. Sit down, councillor Thompson, no. Councillor Thompson, sit down.
I'm asking for a point of information.
Sit down, please. Two people have spoken, right? It was four hands up. Councillor Ellison was the third person to speak, but councillor Ellison has put an amendment. Under the constitution, I have to accept that amendment. It's been seconded. We're now going to move to the amendment and we're going to discuss the amendment. Are you clear with that now? Okay?
Point of information, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Robertson? Make it brief, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I make an amendment to the amendment, please?
Oh, not yet. No. No.
As I refusal on that yet?
We're going to discuss the amendment. Okay? I wish you, is there any training that we can get for some people in here?
Point of information.
Right, councillor Thompson, next.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it was established that was four people had the hands up to speak. Prior to councillor Ellison putting his hand up, is there no sequencing?
Councillor Thompson, councillor Thompson, it's in the mayor's behest. I've went like that. There's no favoritism, nothing like that with me. I noticed that first, then councillor Francis, then I'm coming to councillor Ellison, then I'm councillor, coming to councillor Thompson. And if councillor Purvis had put her hand up, I'd have went to her last. She won't get up and talk like you. Right, that, that amendment. Hopefully get some training done for these people under the constitution. That amendment is seconded by whom? Councillor Barclay. Do any members wish to ask a question or speak on the amendment? Councillor Kilgore?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I would like to support councillor Ellison's amendment. I think if anything is to come back to council or the members, it has to be an informed something. And we have to know the detail as to where we're currently at from an independent perspective. So I think that's a really good point to note. I don't think there's any doubt in any quarter, if you like, that the findings of the report were deeply felt. I don't think there's any doubt about that. But what I would like to come back on is that councillor Brennan did actually film that children, adults and safeguarding meeting, and unfortunately only snapshots of that meeting were shown on social media with only one voice heard. What I would also like to add to is that the member who spoke and sought the resignation of our lead member actually stated in words to this effect. I don't think the lead member should resign. So I'd just like to point that back out. Thank you.
Councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to thank the lead member for actually coming, the pragmatic amendment to come to this council with a full and brief report for us all to hear about what you have to say as a lead member. I also like to echo what you've said about the note around some of the things that a member has said. I am a young councillor and I don't like the inference that the youth of a councillor is tied to their competence as a councillor. We are all here elected on the same basis and I welcome a report from you and I look forward to scrutinising that as a member of the opposition. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll try and read what I was going to say on the original motion and change as I go. But clearly there are two aspects to the current situation with children's services and the recent downgrading of the service by Ofsted too inadequate. Firstly, is how as a council, we react and adhere to the Ofsted recommend recommendations and how we give assurances to the secretary of state, advisor and progress. Everything I have visibility of at this time is reassuring in that we are meeting these obligations. Secondly, though, and importantly, is accountability. As a council, we should all understand what went wrong. Learn from it and install measures to prevent it happening again. Yes, that's exactly what the current recommendations from Ofsted are doing. But we need to remember every elected member here is deemed a corporate parent. And every elected member needs and deserves a level of understanding of what went wrong. Simply even today, we just don't. We just don't have that level of understanding where we're comfortable about the measures that are being rolled out are appropriate. A report from the lead member for children's services, whilst well overdue, despite what he's just said about stages, would be appreciated by this corporate parent. I do, however, accept the proposal in the amendment for a January report. My view is a detailed report from the lead member for children's services here in this chamber. So we adhere to our proud value of being open and honest would hopefully give residents and elected members alike the understanding of what went wrong and also give confidence that it won't happen again. We really have to get past where we are currently. Where the Labour group just don't want to talk about what went wrong. Don't want to take any responsibility and just hope nobody notices, but the opposition does notice. I find it incredible in September full council, when Ofsted related questions were raised by the opposition on the children's services report to fostering in the Mockingbird model. These questions were dismissed by the leader of the council in an outburst declaring this has nothing to do with the Ofsted report. This sort of response is concerning and gives little confidence. The leader, I'm sorry to say, needs to look at the Ofsted inspection report where it clearly states in relation to our Mockingbird constellations that, and I quote directly from Ofsted, there is a lack of management, oversight and scrutiny in key areas across the service. Page six, recommendation twenty three. The lead member for children's service has services, has legislative responsibilities for children's services. Will he take responsibility for the inadequate rating we have served on us? Because currently, nobody seems to be taking any responsibility at all.
Councillor Thompson, can you?
Last.
Yes.
We've seen the director of children's services resign at post, good terms. Seen the head of children's services resign at post, good terms. Both take, both taking positions of the authorities. So it seems nothing was wrong. Nobody is responsible, no accountability from anybody. I hope the lead member can consider his legislative responsibilities, take that political responsibility and start to right the ship by reporting in January to full council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I don't want to be accused of any favoritism or not noticing anybody, as I have been earlier tonight. So I've got councillor Best, councillor Francis, councillor Brennan, councillor Foster and councillor Robertson. Is there anybody else which to speak to this amendment? Councillor Dixon, thank you very much. I would hate to bring in somebody that, you know, ahead of somebody else. You know, it's the mayor's prerogative. Okay, councillor Kennedy first. Did you not? Councillor Robertson? I'm going, by the way, I generally go left to right. Okay?
Favoritism.
It's not, it's mule boxing. Left to right. Okay.
So my words have been taken and twisted and used the wrong way and what have you. And when the member before said that at the safeguarding committee, I said that I don't think councillor Ellison should resign. I did say he shouldn't resign. He's a good councillor. I know he's a good councillor, right? What I was getting at was at the same meeting which that member doesn't quote, when I said to the lead member, what happened with the officers and staff when you were trying to scrutinise or ask questions? And his words to me, which is on camera, they told me that everything was okay. So the officers misled him. The member who spoke before is the chair of the overview and scrutiny committee. She heard that admission. The lead member was misled by officers of this council. Did she act? She had a duty to act. She didn't, right? So down the lines of I did say that Adam shouldn't resign, but hand on heart, the more you read the contents of that Ofsted report, if you're a parent, if you've got children and if you watch the recent horrible documentary that's on the telly, you do feel as though that that department needs to be led by somebody who can tell when an officer has misleading them and tell when an officer has lied. Because the officers did do that to that lad and he didn't deserve it. Thank you.
Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll be, I'll be quick. I welcome the amendment. I don't think that, you know, children's services is the work to develop and improve children's services is going to be an ongoing thing that has no end date and will never be finished. So in some respects, you could argue against deferring at any point in time. You can give an update on the current picture, what we've learned, what's been done since. But given that we're only talking about one meeting further down the line, I'm, I'm happy with that. And, you know, I welcome the chance to take part in that debate. So I'm, I'm happy to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm sure councillor Ellison, other members and officers are working extremely hard to put right what was obviously wrong. And I respect you for doing that. However, this is only half the story. We really need to find out what went wrong and why. So the half the story about the council putting things right, I accept what needs to be included, what went wrong and why. And unfortunately, then people may be named or a system may have been wrong. And that is for an issue on another day. Because we can't have a council where serious mistakes have been made and consequences could be serious. Where the same people, if they have made mistakes, we're human beings have made mistakes, can be allowed to continue doing the role they did. So I accept councillor Ellison, other councillors and members are working extremely hard to put this right. But I need to emphasise, we also need to look what went wrong and we need to address that issue as well when the report comes back in January. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I'd like to support the amendment. And I would like to add some words of support in respect of the lead member. And being a lead member in any council is not an easy thing. And I think the fact that councillor is, is, is our lead member for children's services is actually being accountable and wanting to gather the most information possible before we make any changes and improvements is admirable and he's standing up and he's being accountable and he's suggesting a good timeframe in which we can gather that additional information. I find some of the comments that have been made in this chamber this evening absolutely not acceptable in respect of maturity, calling people a lad. It infers that young people have no place in this chamber or that they should be treated differently. And I would like to explain that yesterday, this chamber and councillor Ellison was here, was filled with young people. And those young people conducted themselves impeccably and the standard of debate in this chamber was outstanding. And if that's the kind of person that we have coming up through the ranks for future democracy in this chamber, then I would encourage those young people to take no notice of some of the things that have been said tonight. Put themselves forward. Don't let age put you off. Councillor Ellison has been working in this chamber for over a decade. And I know that because I've been here with them doing that. And he deserves a lot of credit for taking accountability and being willing to come forward and give a full report on what happens next. Thank you.
Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I won't be needing to take councillor Thompson's advice in reading the Ofsted report. I have fully read the report, councillor Thompson. We did respond robustly to the Ofsted report. We are making excellent progress with regard to the improvement. Don't shake your head, councillor Thompson, please. Well, you do lots of things, don't you, when I tend to speak, councillor Thompson? And, you know, so I welcome the recommendation in this motion, Mr Mayor. It will be the report coming through in January. So I hope that the whole of the chamber agree to the amendment to the motion, Mr Mayor.
Commissioner Ellison, you have a regular reply?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think I'll just be brief in that we're obviously going to bring a report hopefully in January if it is giving consensus in the chamber tonight. I think members will appreciate some of the things that we've already done. So we have tried so at the point of inspection and we did, the inspection report being released, we did go straight to members, all members across the chamber and provide a detailed update on where we were at that point in time. And we have tried since to update members, the key committees, but I appreciate the point and it was already planned for, for a later point in this year, when we had substantive information from Ofsted to come back and provide a more detailed report in this chamber. So I'm looking forward to doing that in January.
Commissioner Brennan, it's got to directly relate to the amendment, okay?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just changed my speech a bit, but I'm going to support this amendment tonight, because I, like the rest of the opposition and the public, haven't heard the full story. I haven't heard the full report or the lead member speak to this chamber or anything related to what went wrong. So I welcome the report coming back. I haven't heard about how we're now working with Ofsted to adhere to the recommendations. Sorry, I have heard how we're working, we're going to work with Ofsted to adhere to the recommendations, but I haven't heard the full explanation from the lead member on what went wrong and who was responsible. Yes, I've heard the lead member for children's services speaking on the Mockingbird model last time at full council and recently in the parenting panel, explaining what he's going to do to get us out of this mess. But like has already been mentioned, talking about the solution and the actual problem are two different things. So what I want to know is, in this report when it comes back, what went wrong? How did the leadership take the eye off the ball and allow children's services to get the worst ever Ofsted result this council's ever had? Why has two of our most senior officers resigned and why haven't we heard an explanation or even an apology from the lead member for getting this bad Ofsted report? I welcome the report coming back in January to this chamber, so hopefully we'll never get in the same mess again. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
What is the point of information you're trying to make? Which member? Okay, listen, listen very carefully.
Thank you very much. Very carefully. The lead member said before that there's a report will come back to full council. I don't know if he said January, yeah?
Yes, he said.
Yeah. Will he confirm that that report will explain to full council and the people of South Tyneside whether there was police involvement or what was done to check on these kids that had been in these unregistered homes for months, as Ofsted said? You've got to remember, lead member, there's families' lives are ruined on a weekly basis by this council. When a slight thing goes wrong in a marriage, children are took away, people are took to court. But when it comes to them doing it themselves, is there any court involvement? Is there any police involvement? Do as we say and not as we do. Thank you.
Okay. I'm now going to put this to the vote. Is the amendment agreed? Okay. So that concludes that particular item. Yeah, yeah, we know that, yeah. It takes, it's already been agreed, though. It takes the place of the original motion, so it becomes, what you've agreed is a substantive motion. It's agreed? Yeah? We wait for the bells. The bells have tolled, seven o'clock. Could I thank everybody for their attendance here tonight? I think that it's, there's something being said by, by all members that we all need to take on board, which is about actually listening to what other people are saying and not jumping in and making accusations. But that's me getting political and I shouldn't be political as the mayor. Can I just wish you an onward, safe word journey? And I'm closing the meeting, 7pm. May God bless.